Yeah, it does go up or down. Absolutely. I'm ready when you are. It is 7 o'clock and I hereby call the May meeting of the Village's Chivalry Board of Trustees to order. Would you please rise with a pledge to our flag?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. There are a few items on the agenda, however, I'm going to take the agenda out of order for this evening for the annual presentation from the Redhook School District and our superintendent, Paul Finch, is here along with his colleagues to talk about the annual budget. So with that, Mr. Finch, the floor is yours.
Thanks for having us. I'm bringing Greg Sheldon with me this year because we have a capital, small capital project on the ballot this year. It's not exactly an exciting project with Boilermailing, but it's an important project that can relate to the infrastructure.
Right.
So let me tell you about our budget. We started with really two objectives. Number one, to maintain existing opportunities for kids, and number two, to stay under the tax cap. Those two don't play well together, as you know.
I've heard.
So when we rolled over our budget, we made a couple of assumptions, looked at what our structural deficit would be, and we started with 1.6 million dollars. A couple of things worked in our favor to close that gap. We had increased state aid and this is how the state looks at an increase. They take away this much and give you back this much and it's an increase in state aid. So we have a $515,000 increase to close the gap for us a little bit. Health insurance came in better than expected. Typically, we expect health insurance to increase about 8%. Came in at 3.7% this year, so that helped us to shrink that gap. And then we had six teachers retire and we're not replacing one of them, so we'll recognize breakage from the five that we are replacing and it's pure savings that we're not replacing. That closed the gap and that 1.6 million down to 450,000. And so what we decided to do with the board was to take out of our retiring health insurance accruals, essential savings that we have. And Bruce is going to talk to you a little bit about the danger in that. As you know, once you do that, it's one-time revenue. You have to be able to maintain that over time and/or be able to wean yourself off that before your state is gone down. So we're very proud of that. And so we were able to close the gap, get to a place where we maintain existing opportunities for kids, and we're under the tax cap. Just in terms of numbers on the expenditure side, we're 2.54. It's the, I think it's the fourth lowest in Dutchess County. On the tax levy side, we're 3.42, which is about $163,000 below our maximum allowable cap, which would have been 3.92 or something like this. So that's my piece of presentation.
Bruce Miller. Yeah, so those are really all the basics. And as Paul said, I'll just talk for a couple of seconds on the money we took out of savings. We stepped very cautiously down the path of going to one-time revenues to support ongoing and drawing expenditures because after we did all the things that Paul described, we closed that budget gap. All those things happened, we still had a structural deficit of $450,000. So had we looked at it purely from a financial standpoint, what we really should have done is gone out and found $450,000 worth of program things to cut and take out of the budget. But we've played in that game a couple of times already over the last three or four years. And so since we had those savings available, we thought that this year the plan should be to apply those in order to maintain program, in effect kicking the can down the road on those cuts because if things don't improve out of the future, state aid catches up with the shortfall created by the tax cap or, you know, some maybe some change in the way the restriction works on the tax cap, then those are just cuts delayed to some later date. So it was easy for us to do. We took a very small step in that direction. It's easy for us to talk about, but anytime you start thinking about one-time revenues to support ongoing costs, there's a danger of weakening your financial position and having those come back to bite you later. So a couple of important dates coming up. We have, actually, there's about an hour and a half left for folks to register for the Mill Road School this evening. So you do have to be registered to vote in our election. The district election happens next Tuesday, May 21st, and there are a few things on the ballot besides the budget. We have a board election going on. There are two seats that expire this year. We have two incumbent candidates running for those two seats. Johanna Moore and Kelly Mojer are both running again to fill the seats that are expiring. We have had, for the last six or eight years, we've had a student board member that sits at the board table. It's a non-voting student board member, but it brings a student's perspective to the group. And that has to be voter-approved originally, and it has to be renewed every two years. And this is the year that that comes back on the ballot for renewal. And then we have a couple of additional propositions that involve finance. We have a bus proposition that we do pretty much every year. This year it's very similar to with the Baskets. For two full-size buses and a wheelchair van. And it's $280,000, which is right in the range that we usually are, in an effort to keep approximately a 10-year replacement cycle going on the buses. And then finally, we have the capital project that Perry will give you some details on. It's a $7.5 million project with 64%, 64.4% state aid coming back in to support the debt service that will ultimately happen as a result of that project. And both of those last two things that I talked about would have no further impact on the '13-'14 tax levy. So the buses, they will either be funded through fund balance that will be left at the end of this year. We'll appropriate that and pay cash for the buses, or they would be, if we didn't have enough, we would bond those buses in a way where the first payment would come due in '14-'15. So the buses would have no impact on the tax levy in '13-'14. And the capital project will be all bonded, with the exception of we have a $500,000 capital reserve that will go toward the $7.5 million. But the remainder of that would be bonded, and the first payment on that bond will come due in the '14-'15 years. So neither of those propositions will have anything, any impact on the tax levy in '13-'14. With all of that said, I will let Perry tell you a little bit more about the details of what's in that capital project.
So as has been mentioned, it's primarily, it starts off with the majority of it's a boiler project at the Mill Road Elementary School. Building was built in 1969 and was in addition in 1971. All four of the boilers are original to the building, as well as all the unit ventilators, each of the classrooms, all original. And when the building was built, the life expectancy of that equipment was 25 to 30 years. So we're now, we're between 40 and 45 years. That equipment's been in place. It's been well-maintained and it's serviced well, but you just, you know, it's, we're starting to see repair costs are escalating and these are costs that comes in the tens of thousands of dollars, not a few hundred dollars here and there. And the other side of it is, like many assets of this size, they're not readily available. If we were to wait until failure, we could be sitting in the middle of winter without having a boiler and all of a sudden you started running the education process. So that's going to identify. And then it comes to a process where we continue to review the assets in the district. We, as you know, we've redone the roofs on most of the buildings recently. We renovated nine science classrooms just last summer. You know, we're just kind of picking away at the list of things that you have to do to keep the facilities in condition and what we expect to do today. Other parts we're projecting a telephone system that was installed in the 90s. We've been informed by our vendor that new spare parts are no longer going to be available as of July of this year. As you can imagine, you don't want to be with a phone system that you can't get part of the spare parts for. We are also looking at upgrading our camera system. These are some security measures. We've got camera. And we're also looking at door locks throughout the district that are upgraded. Many of them original to the building. If you can imagine how many times they've been opening and closed, they're really getting quite worn.
We still have skeleton keys.
Yeah, we actually still have skeleton keys at Linden Avenue Middle School. So that tells you how old. The building was built in 1938. I think there was an addition in the 50s that are the newer doors. Other parts we're looking at is wireless internet throughout the district. So that'll be a big enhancement for educational purposes for both teachers and students. And then also adding car access at the Mill Road Elementary School. The high school and middle school currently have a car access which allows teachers and administrators to move freely in and out of the building. We don't have that at the elementary school, so it makes it just more difficult to keep the building secure where we need to. So that said, you know, it's not a fancy project. It's kind of a lot of meat and potatoes types of things, but it's all things, all good investments that we need to be making for the future.
And we really haven't had a lot of fanfare around this project because it's, you know, it's really necessary infrastructure. And the price tag, as these things go, is relatively small. With the state aid, the local share as this comes in is roughly a third of a percent on the tax levy in '14-'15 and another third of a percent on the tax levy in '15-'16. And then it stays at that level. But we have other debt service dropping off in the near future as well, which will mitigate the impact of that. And in those first couple of years, we have some money in the debt service fund that we can apply to further offset the little bump that we'll see when that debt comes on before the other comes off. So, you know, unlike, you know, some other fancier building projects, there really hasn't been much fanfare around this one because of the necessary infrastructure nature and the relatively modest price tag.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's one of those.
You have any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. One of the big buzzwords right now is shared services. And it's a big buzzword within the county. And I was at the Conference of Mayors last week, and that's a real push. And I talked about our relationship because we have shared, we've borrowed your voting machines, and you've been very kind to allow us to use stencils for some of our parking issues. So I wanted to, A, say thank you and offer, if there's anything that we can do to return the favor. I think it's obviously a buzzword that's going on between all municipalities and governments, but I think it's a necessity. And I think between the town and the two villages and the school districts and even the college, I think we're all starting to look towards that. So I'm looking forward to.
We've been all the way to the audience.
You got a bridge or something to? But no, in all seriousness, if there's anything that we can do to return the favor and keep up the good work and.
Always looking for those opportunities.
Yeah.
I'd also like to say, one of those six retiring teachers is a former First Lady of Tivoli, and we wish her well.
Lydia Corrigan, absolutely. Absolutely. So, anybody else?
Just keep up the good work.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. And the election is, when again?
21st.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks a lot. Okay. Returning on to regular business. There are no members of the public here, so we'll move right into a Village Clerk's report.
Yes, the reporter, the retired fellow from the Village of Tivoli, you know, the Village Planning Meeting and Workshop attended, is agreeing two payrolls and please prepare the tax roll for submission to the county and we're beginning to close out the fiscal year to begin close out.
Thank you very much. In your packet are three sets of minutes, the minutes from the April 12th reorganizational meeting, the April 17th board meeting, and April 24th budget workshop. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve all three sets of minutes as submitted.
It's moved.
Motion has been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconds. Is there any discussion on any of the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I know that Trustee Bruno will talk about upcoming event in her report. Bo Canellas, are there any upcoming events in addition to?
Monday, 27th of July.
Okay. Any other events? No? Moving on to the Treasurer's Report.
We had $31,654.42 of general fund, $3,103.71 in the water fund, $4,142.65 in sewer fund, for a total of $3,878.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I entertain a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. It's moved. Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? Motion's been made in seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. You've all had an opportunity to review the vouchers, which is reflected in the Treasurer's Report. I entertain a motion to approve payment of the bills for this month. Motion's been made by Trustee Bruno and seconded by Trustee Israedi. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Israedi is our zoning report.
The zoning enforcement officer has been busy. Two building permits that were issued for $50 each for a total of $1,200. And there's a listing of construction that's going on in the village, which looks to be significant. Lots of improvements in properties. And I believe it covers it.
Okay. Short and sweet. Moving on to regular business. As soon as I find my notes. It is necessary for us to establish a public hearing regarding the exchange of parcels with the American Legion Harris Smith Post 524 and the Village of Tivoli. This is a legality that we need to undertake to continue on with this process. At this point, I entertain a motion to establish this public hearing for June 19th at 7:00 PM here at the Harris Smith Post.
It's moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made in second by Trustee Israedi. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lynda, I'll give that to you for our records, June 19th at 7:00. Moving on is supporting resolution for the Town of Redhook. This is a memorialization in support of a resolution that the Town of Redhook has undertaken with regards to the use of brine on Town of Redhook roads. And at this point, I return the floor over to Trustee Griffith.
Thank you. This is a symbolic resolution endorsing the adoption of local laws by the Town of Redhook regarding the use of brine, disposal of natural gas for oil drilling waste products, and zoning for heavy industry. We would like to, this Village Board would like to get behind our friends and colleagues of Redhook for their efforts on this subject. And as they've set a public hearing to receive comments, we would like to, we've reviewed the proposed laws and we believe that the adoption of those three laws by the Town Board, that being Redhook, is in the best interest of the Village of Tivoli and the Town of Redhook. So I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Griffith and seconded by Trustee Israedi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. The next is authorization for me to sign a contract with Software Consulting Associates Incorporated. This is for necessary upgrades for our water and sewer usage with regards to billing. The contract has been reviewed by Council and under her advice, has advised me to sign the contract. However, I can't sign it until the board approves it. So at this point, I entertain a motion authorizing me to continue on with the contract between the Village of Tivoli and SCA.
It's moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Griffith. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? I believe this is a, is this a three-year contract, Lynda?
I forgot the dates are on it.
I apologize. I thought I knew off the top of my head. Council, do you remember? Was it three years?
It's a little change of year. But there's an annual maintenance.
Right.
So I have a couple of elevations, so.
Actually, it's been negotiated by the 700.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I will, I'll confirm it. But it really is a housekeeping issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on is another step forward with regards to shared services. And this is a shared resolution, supporting resolution for the opportunity to join with the Town of Hyde Park as lead agency for an application to the Municipal Consolidation Shared Services Grant with Dutchess County for municipal software. At this point, I return the floor over to Trustee Israedi.
Basically, this is actually a software that's also provided by SCA and the current, our current zoning enforcement officer uses a current form of this zoning software. It helps to keep track of planning board decisions, zoning board variance approvals, and site plan reviews for various parcels that he's responsible for. They will be kept electronically, which will facilitate both locating them and making sure that we keep them. And I move that we participate in this program with Hyde Park.
Motion's been made by Trustee Israedi. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second and by Trustee Griffith. I want to thank Supervisor Alien Orr from the Town of Hyde Park for spearheading this. The Town of Hyde Park will be the lead agency. It appears that a good number of municipalities throughout Dutchess County will be signing on to this. This was a discussion at the Mayors and Supervisors Meeting last Tuesday night. The county executive, Mark Molinaro, came and gave a really good discussion with all of his department heads about shared services. There are quite a few of services, there are quite a few services that Dutchess County has that he and his department heads are encouraging us to take care of. One of which is a catalog that is available to all municipalities for the purchasing of paper goods, paper towels, toilet paper, pens, toners, that sort of things at discounted rates rather than using private firms. So I'm going to hand this over to the clerk later on. But this opportunity to share the service with all the other towns municipalities is definitely a step in the right direction. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, I'm going to turn the floor over to Trustee Bruno to discuss Tivoli's Summer Camp. For the last two years, we've had a summer recreation program. This year, we're having a summer camp, which is a little different. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Everybody get comfortable. I have a lot. Yes, we will be announcing your 2013 Village of Tivoli Summer Camp. And assistants from Mayor Crannick and our fantastic clerk, we are moving in a very good direction. And we have some dates of the program. We began the Monday after school lets out, in Monday, June 24th through Friday, July 26th. Hours at this point will be 9 to 12. We're looking to hopefully tweak them. We'd love to lengthen the day. At this point, we're working with what we have, with the folks that are available and timing and budgeting. And we're in the process now seeking approval from the county Department of Health. It will be run as a camp. That's why we're very happy. It's not just a program anymore. It will be defined by the county Department of Health as camp.
To offer more activities?
Yes.
For the children?
And the activities would be the basic arts and crafts and board games, more sports, kickball, soccer. And if any of you have been in the park, you'll have noticed that the basketball court was paved and resurfaced. We're investigating the lining of the court. So it'll have the middle and the key, the outer lines. They could have a pickup game of basketball. We've got the nets up. Things are looking up over there. The assistant counselors, they are fantastic. They always look for a wide variety of other games that the children would enjoy. They explore a bunch of different areas. And too, it's based on request of some of the participants. Usually a very big hit. And they're able to plan the games and the crafts around the requests and sort of tie in with the age groups. So they're, you know, the equivalent to what they can handle. So they have separate areas for separate ages. One thing that will be new being that it's required by the county as the camp. There'll be some more forms though that parents will need to complete. Immunization forms will be required. So just to give a little heads up on that for the parents. The Director, Gal Torscha, and her assistants, Elise Navarro, Kaylee, Sella, and Caitlin Simmons, they'll be ready, prepared. They'll provide a comfortable, safe, but a full of fun atmosphere for all of the participants. Tivoli residents will attend complimentary. We're determining now a small fee for non-residents. It will not be a large fee. But the program is continuing to grow. The past two years, we've moved forward and I look forward to improving it each and every year as we keep moving.
Robin, what age groups do you serve?
They have to have had completed a year of kindergarten through school. So let's say five to six. I'd say up to about 12.
We'll let you in. It's okay.
Great. No, that's just.
You can be fantastic.
I'm going to come over for the pickup.
Thank you. I am excited to see this go from a pro summer rec to an actual summer camp. So that's, that's great. I'm very, very excited about that. And we want to thank Kathy Shinella, the Dutch County Health Department, who's been extremely helpful to us in getting this, getting this organized. This afternoon, we placed intercoms downstairs on the basement level of the Village Hall. It's because our elevator is not operating at this point. If you need to either drop off or have documents delivered to you from the Village Clerk's Office, there is an intercom that you can ring and it will ring into the Clerk's Office if you're physically unable to access the Clerk's Office through the stairs. So there is an intercom that's been placed there. Also wanted to let you know that each month we will place our Treasurer's Report on our Village webpage beginning in June. This will allow residents an opportunity to see every month where their dollars are being spent. So we'll start that in June with the beginning of the new fiscal year. So each month, there will be our Treasurer's Report posted on to our, posted on to our webpage. The next board meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held June 19th at 7:00 PM. There'll be a workshop prior at 6:00 PM, and that will be here at the American Legion. And the regular workshop will be June 12th at 6:00 PM. With that being said, I will turn this over to committee reports. Deputy Mayor Levy.
Okay. As far as the police report goes, it looks like we had 97 total calls for the month of April. I won't go into every single one of these calls, but it looks like we had four accidents, just to go over some of them. Local ordinance violations, three. Suspicious circumstances, two. Four order protections. And we had a total of 10 EMS police response calls, just to mention a few of the items. That's all I have with the police report. And if you can give me just a couple of minutes after the.
Yes, we'll come back. Trustee Israedi.
Well, had some good discussion with the fire department about some new equipment that they need, and we're moving forward. And we also received some additional funds from Redhook for this fiscal year. So that worked out very well. Planning and zoning boards have been meeting regularly. The zoning board of appeals helped to facilitate moving forward the Legion transfer by granting a variance that had to do with the fact that it will have an easement, but not actually own the land between where it's located and the street. The planning board has been very active. This is a great. This is a great board, they've done human service, and they're, we promised them all that they wouldn't have to meet very often and that the meetings would be short, and since they've...
Surprise!
Since they've all arrived, we've had regular meetings, and some of them have lasted three hours, but a great group, and we're going to get some workshops going to keep them abreast of the law.
And we're going to share those workshops with the village of Red Hook.
And we are.
More shared services.
Yeah, very good.
Trustee Bruno.
Okay, well, definitely go over the camp, but to tie things into the park, if you haven't been in and checked out the ball field...
Looks great.
A fellow Tivolian, Jeff Card, he's a player on the men's league, he's put in so much time and effort, completely revamped the infield, and it's now even safer for the men to play. Looks absolutely incredible, it's been a pleasure to work with him, he's just very supportive of the field and the park. He, along with Arbario Cody Thayer, they had the temporary fence to repair the broken section, there's new fence that will be coming in, they had the rods for the top and the caps, and there was extra, like, that yellow spiral piece, so the fence will basically be rebuilt and look new. But they've done an outstanding job, so my sincere thanks go out to both of them, and I look forward to working with them, working closely with them throughout the season, and even getting some ideas what we can do possibly for next year. And we're still going to paint, it just hasn't happened yet, but we will paint the bathrooms and the dugouts. Library call for programs, they have a bunch. And for our veterans, keep in mind that on Monday, Memorial Day, May 27, 10 a.m., the American Legion will host a Memorial Day ceremony, location will be the south side of the Red Church Cemetery. Again, it's hosted by this legion, Harris Smith Post number 524. If there are any questions, you can call Commander Tom Mayby at 757-4489.
Thank you. Trustee Griffith.
Thank you. I'll begin with the village court report, covering charges from April 1 through April 30, 2013. Total charges received, 27. Total charges disposed, 30. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, and fines, $1,335. Surcharges, $540. Civil fees, $70, for a total of $1,945. Next, the water report. We had a clean village health for the month of April. They took the required routine samples, and we didn't come up with any red flags. Special work in the water system where all the water mains were flushed throughout the month of April, on the 16th, 18th, 23rd, and 25th. And they do do that at night, trying to inconvenience people as little as possible. And as I promised last week, last month, it's a bit just to me, the depths of the various wells, they really vary quite a bit, so we usually tell you all the gallons per minute, but the water was coming out, so I'll just let you know, the Ballot Well, which was off, is actually 183 feet deep. The McKnight Well, which put out 300,000 gallons, is 54 feet deep. The 2P W, put out 270,000 gallons, is a shallow 33 feet deep compared to the Ballot. But listen to this one, the 5P W is 245 feet deep. There's be some good water down there. And the 4P E and the 10P E are 50 and 60 feet deep. Some interesting information about where your water comes from.
And you can smile for Bradley.
And also, on April 27, it was a beautiful, beautiful Saturday, unlike the previous year, so we were able to have our annual cleanup day, and we had 19 volunteers come out. I think the youngest one was Philip, in about nine months, who stayed with his mom at village hall to hand out the water and garbage bags, right on up to the Waterhouses, I want to thank them for coming out, former trustee Robert Waterhouse and his lovely and energetic wife Regina. With our 19 volunteers, we covered the Tivoli waterfront, all along Broadway, Pharaoh, Pine Street, up North Road, all the way down Montgomery Street to the Red Bridge, and out Broadway to the Monument and back, so it was really a full sweep. We were joking that if we do as good a job every year, we might have to take a year off and let it reaccumulate. It's just amazing how much stuff gathers in the hedgerows. So thanks to all our volunteers, and thanks to trustee Bruno for tracking down the water for us. So it was a very successful event, and we'll do it again next year.
Great. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Levy.
Okay, I just want to read something I wrote today. Since 2008, I've been, I have had the honor of serving as a member of the Village of Tivoli Board Trustees. For over two years, I proudly served under Mayor Carrana as his deputy. During my tenure in office, together, we have worked to move Tivoli forward and to make it a better place for all of us to call home. I'm proud to have worked with my colleagues in the village board, with all the village personnel, but mostly I'm proudly to work with the residents of this community. I'm proud to be a father of four amazing children and two special grandchildren. My children play a major role in my life, and now I'm about to begin a new chapter in my life, one in which I'm very excited to begin. With that being said, tonight I'm announcing my resignation as deputy mayor and trustee. The new chapter will see me moving out of the village. However, my memories and fondness of the village will last forever. I'm grateful to Mayor Carrana for the responsibilities bestowed upon me to serve as his deputy mayor. I am honored to have served with each and one of you, and I thank the residents for the support that they have shown me over the five and a half years that I have worked together, and I wish everybody the best.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is a loss to the government, it's a loss to this community, and I want to say how grateful I am for everything that you've done over the last five and a half years, not only as a trustee and a deputy mayor, but as a confidant and someone who's given me advice and has told me, "Brian, no, you can't do that, we need to think about this." And you've changed my mind on a lot of things, and you've been there, and on behalf of the Village of Tivoli, thank you very much. And I know we all wish you well. The deputy mayor's resignation is coming up soon, so still be a deputy mayor for up until...
June 1.
June 1. So there's still a couple days to hound him and tell him where it's...
And please do.
But no, I greatly appreciate all the assistance you've given me, and it's been a pleasure, a pleasure to work with all of you.
I've been honored. This is a great community, and I'm sorry to leave it, but it's going to be an exciting time for me, so...
Okay, well, good luck in whatever you're off to.
Thanks.
We greatly appreciate everything. Thank you very much for having us, for your friendship, and most of all, your professionalism. Listen, Mike. Thank you. With that being said...
Is there a tax warrant in your package?
Yes.
Could you please...
You need your money, don't you? Is there a tax warrant in my book?
Either way, I noticed in the treasurer's report that the treasurer has been working hard at pulling in extra revenues everywhere she can find it, and I applaud that.
We appreciate it. Any chance to offset? Thank you. Yes, there is a tax warrant in here, and I need to entertain a motion, it's the current budget, the amount for the tax warrant is $430,617.
So move.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Roll call, vote. Deputy Mayor Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Israti?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Griffith?
Aye.
Motion carries. And at this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of Peter Sturgis, who we lost a few weeks ago. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor and seconded by trustee Griffith. We are adjourned. It is...